Previous board comments and incorporated drawing. And then I think. The cancer representative. So just under Alexandra to. To obtain notarized. Signature. On. On owner's acknowledgement block. And then scan and return. Which he has done. That's the only other thing I don't see in there. Hawkins moved to approve, buyer's amended. Okay, so the board business. Bill, Bill's board trustees request a planning board's comments regarding the proposed short terms rentals code chapter. Board reviews draft code line by line during the discussion. It was noted that proposed code revisions must be defensible comparisons and references to the SDR code. Were met between Lake Placid and Rhinebeck were made reconciliation between the lottery and allocation table is unclear. This is kind of choppy. I don't know. Proposed code revisions. These, this actually needs some work. I think I'll, let's just table this one for now. We just have a little bit more meat on the bone for that. I have to go back to the. Video for that. Any reported members?
No reports.
No.
I have a question. If you build a pool or something in the backyard, do we, do you need a, the planning board permission or, or it doesn't really matter?
This is your report?
Not my report. I just have a question.
Building, yeah, good, that'd be for the building inspector.
Okay.
But yeah, of course, any, any major construction like that's going to need a permit. There's quite a bit, there's quite a bit of site issues too. You have to, you know, safety fencing, all of that.
All right. The reason I'm asking is, I'm not certain if these guys are building a pool, but from our window, if you look across and we can see the one side of constitution. And there was construction going on. We, we think they might be building a swimming pool. But I don't know. I'm just, that's why I'm asking it. Do we need a permit to build a swimming pool?
Permit, yes, but not necessar- would it necessarily?
Not a permit, that our approval or does the?
It's an R, it's an R1.
Okay.
The planning board doesn't do R1.
All right. I'm, I'm, I'm just, just curious. Yeah, that's, that's a question, not, not.
Okay, yeah, that's the, yeah, that's the planning board doesn't have a whole lot to do with, with existing R1. That's code enforcement, which is make sure that the, that the requirements are met under the code.
Okay.
Okay, and then we have no correspondence, no new business. The old business is the resolution. Let me pull that up really quick.
Hopefully you could share it out.
Yep, looks good. Thanks, Jeff. Eight agendas. I haven't had a chance to look at this. Okay, good. He's got the reference in there for this to the code. Okay. Replace wall canopy and light fixtures, add new wall fixtures. And this should be changed, actually. And. Is a lamp post, right? Whereas probably lies the villages to be two site plan approval, whereas the applicant is real for the HDRB. It's a type two action under seeker. It's less than 4,000 square feet. Where is the API referred to planning board? This matter was a local determination and where's the app is required to provide minimum lighting around the existing Wells Fargo. Machine for safety reasons pursuant to New York State Banking Law Section 75 dash B dot four and CC is the exterior ATM. With the lowest light level of. Two foot candles at grade and then one foot candle at like five foot vertical. So that's correct. Whereas the planning was reviewed, the aforementioned application materials, but the applicant states the lighting requirement shows that the applicant stays lowest possible level of lighting under the state law. Okay, because I want to make sure we have that in the resolution in case things get tweaked. Resolved as the planning board here by determines the site plan application. It's all general site plan objectives, the village code. Prepared by GMR facility now. So let me get the drawing data. Actually, we just insert this now while we're here. Just trying to look at the revision block on the drawings, just to see what date drawings were revised last. Well, there's no date. Version six. Huh? Trying to get the revision data, the drawings, which.
Didn't they, they submit something right before the meeting?
It's what the. Drawings have a block on them. They're supposed to have a date on them.
Oh.
The bottom in the revision, all the revisions. And they don't have dates, which I didn't notice that last time. Alright, so.
It's not mentioned.
That's weird. There's nothing in the block.
Is there another demarcation we can use or temporarily or would have?
Yeah, just, yeah, I mean, I guess I'll just date them, I guess. I'll just stamp them. I'm trying to see. He has a. Index number.
So anytime before March 11.
Alright, so I'll. Let me just pull, these are the same draw. It's actually the same drawings that he submitted. They're just, they're just signed. So let me go back to. Alright, so we'll just. March 11. So I think, I think they're March 10th, because I didn't get them the day before 2021. Involving the real property situated at Blacklot. Testicles research granted, obtaining approval for the historic billboard. I've done so, subject to payment on consulting fees. And their escrow. Dated today for adoption. Okay. Okay, with those, with, with that completion, we have a. Remembered before the, the resolution to adopt the, to adopt the. March 25th resolution for Wells Fargo at 41 Chestnut Street for a lighting plan for site plan update.
So moved.
Okay, bye. Okay, we have a second.
Second.
Okay. Okay. Roll call vote.
Ready for roll call?
Yeah.
Okay, Chairman Francisco.
Yes.
Member Hawkins.
Yes.
Member Eldon.
Yes.
And member Meyer.
Yes.
Okay, great.
And my name has not as Matt.
All right.
Yeah.
All right, very good. Alright, so that's done. I'll print that off. I'll take it down to Jeff tomorrow. Okay, so the next item on the agenda is to go through all the, the short, the short term rentals. So. I see Sue, I see Lara had put some edits in today. We need to get something to the HR, the, I'm sorry, the code update committee. We're very late, you know, without comments before I had given them my own memo, but it, but what we need. And the bill attorney has advised is that the planning board needs to give an opinion. So it needs to be a, you know, a, you know, a majority opinion of the planning board. So let me just pull up. The file. Okay, so. Legalize and regularly, has anybody else looked at this or?
I did.
I just, I saw a few from Lara today. I know we had talked about liking. You know, the purpose of the, of the other two short terms where they really talk about impacts. But in, let me just pull it up really quick.
Hey, Matt. In previously, we had exchanged copies of the short term rental chapter and there were comments. That we had discussed in that and there were comments that I had made and I was just wondering if those were, were those transcribed here or is this a, should I, should I transcribe them?
If, if they were put in during the meeting, it was in real time during the meeting.
Yeah.
But I don't know that we really got that far. I mean, I think we kind of just, I think it was more talking. I think people were, the takeaway was kind of to go to the, the shared document.
Right, okay.
And kind of take a look at it. I peeked at it like about a week ago or so and I realized actually the layer wasn't added. I, you know, I, I'd missed that. But, but I saw that there hadn't been any changes. Let me just take a quick look at.
Um, I, I read through, I did not put changes in. Well, it needs code to get in or something like that, but I did go through that. Besides a few. Spelling things. I, I, I think my main question, as we discussed before, is. Well, first, if, if anybody challenges this, it's, there got to be enough reason to defend this, but. What is the purpose of this law or rules or whatever we call it? Are we, is it gonna control the short term rental or is it gonna encourage it on the? And then if we encourage it, why isn't everybody allowed to? To do this instead of just 38? If we are gonna control it, then why 38? Then, yeah, that's the basic question. People either for it, people will ask, how come you only limit to 38? If it's against it, then people probably will ask, you know, why we don't put in something more strict? Or if it's for everybody to. To share the profit, why is not everybody allowed? You know, the whole village should, everybody in this village should be allowed to do something if you meet the requirement. That's, that's a.
Right, okay, we need, yeah, so, but we need to get kind of, we need to get a response back to, you know.
Yeah, that's, you know, that's, that's basically my question and, and my feeling. I don't know where to put that in. When I was reading through it.
Alright, let me just go back to where I'd started, which is, so the, we'll put a pin in that for a minute. So the, basically we're talking about, I think the one that was. I, I think it was Rhinebacks, actually. Where they talk about short term rentals have the potential to be incompatible with surrounding residential uses, especially when several are concentrated in the same area. They're having the potential for a deleterious effect on the adjacent full-time residents. Special regulations of these uses is necessary to, to ensure that they will be compatible with surrounding residential uses. And will not act to harm and alter the neighborhoods they are located within. That use statement, you know, that kind of, you know, that. I, I think is more in line with what, with what are, you know, the goals are here. You know, and they're, they are kind of saying the same thing. I think the language is just a little bit clearer as opposed to just, you know. Regulate and minimize the impacts of noise, trash, and sometimes associated with short term rentals. I think it should be a little clearer that what you're really talking about. Is that for the residential use that these things can have, you know, have a negative effect. On people's quiet enjoyment in, you know, in, in a residential neighborhood. So the goal is to regulate them. So I think that. You know, we need to. I think this just should be kind of tightened up a little bit. Preserve the residential and community character of the village, providing economic support for village residents who would benefit from mental income, provide lodging.
Is there a tax issue involved in the? Short term rental, because there's income, then apparently they pay tax.
You can't, you're talking about for the village?
Yeah, does the, no, not.
The village can't collect anything from this. You have to be a city.
Right, does the tax come back to the village?
No.
So. So the income does not benefit the village as a whole.
Not directly, no.
Alright.
No, you have to do a room tax. I think you have to be a city.
Alright.
And since sales tax doesn't come back, you know, you could do an occupancy tax that I think might come back in the form of sales tax. I'm not sure. But there's no sales tax sharing in this county. So.
So, so, so in a, in a way, the, the village takes care of the garbage, the whatever, and the, the general, the, if there is any negative impact. The village takes care of it, but doesn't benefit from. From the. Income.
Not the income directly, the village has, yeah, the village has the property taxes. Obviously, it's if, you know, look, if it, if it. If that's the difference between making your, being able to pay your property taxes or not, then I guess you could say yes, you know, people would default or, you know. But no, I mean, it's, it's a piece of this income itself is not coming to the village at all. As I understand it, there's no way to do it. I'd like to look into it, but as people have done that so far. And I think that the only way you can do that is if you're a city. So it's not gonna, it's not gonna, it's not gonna come back to us directly. Alright, let's, we kind of need to do a little organizer, which is kind of be, we're gonna be all over here.
Okay.
Legalize short term rentals in the village of culture, bringing a short term rentals. I mean, I, like I said, I think that this, let me just see if I can, let me actually just. What is going on here? Hold on one second. Just stop the share. I can't seem to get into this document.
Are you trying to get into the Google? That happened to me earlier where I couldn't get into the Google document, then I.
What's that?
No, sorry. That's not.
It, it wouldn't let you in or?
Yeah, it wouldn't let me in and then I had to say open in Google documents or something. I don't know. It felt strangely, yeah, but, but I.
You got it?
Yeah.
Rhinebeck short term rental. I just wanted, so the, the Rhinebeck short term rentals, the, their code has this statement. Short term rentals have the potential to be incompatible with surrounding residential uses, especially when several are concentrated in the same area, thereby having the potential for a deleterious effect. On the adjacent full-time residents. Special regulation of these uses is necessary to ensure that they will. Be compatible with surrounding residential uses and will not harm, act to harm and alter the neighborhoods they are located within. I mean, I think that's actually a good statement. I think it's good language to just kind of say, you know. Because obviously what the question that's going to be asked, you know, people were to challenge it is, is why did you do this? And what is your, what's your justification for doing it? I think it's, I think this is, the language is quite clear. The, this one that Rhinebeck used. Let me just convert this to word really quick. Here it is. Maybe we'll just continue because I don't really have the gray matter to do it like. A narrative regularly. Let me hold on a second. View, review. I mean, my comment here was be just to consider. Just a suggestion, basically just to consider something like that. As opposed to just, this is just a little light, I think, you know. This is fine. You can have support fillers, that's fine. Accessory building, these are all just defined terms. So owner occupied property. On our record is a primary residence where the owner resides for no fewer than 260 days. That's standard. Residents require for clarity, so I mean.
Maddie, did you just make contributions to this document? Because if you did, I'm not like, where the purpose is, because I, if you did, I am not.
This comment right here?
Well, you're not sharing, so I, I can't.
Oh, it's not sharing?
I can't see where you are on the, on. I thought you were, I thought you were in purpose and I was looking for your cursor and I didn't see any activity and I don't see any comments. Around purpose, so. I just didn't wanna, you know, I, I had, I had FOMO, Maddie.
Hold on. Alright, so I'll share it here.
Okay, got it.
And this is the, this is the latest one off of there. I think it, the only comments I think are inherent just Lara's and mine at this point.
You're in, you're in Word. You don't look like you're in the Google Doc.
Oh, you know, that's right, actually. You know what? I don't think I pulled that one over. Hold on, let me go to that one. Oh, no, wait, of course I did. It's the same thing. It's. It's, yeah, it's on my document. No, it's in it. But I, I would say I'm not in Google Docs because I have Word installed.
Right. I just went in, I, I just went in and I, I made contributions. I dragged them over from the Word file that I had worked on into the Google Doc. So. Is there a way to share the Google Doc? Well, the Google Doc is shared with everyone in that link. No, no, yeah, yeah, I just mean like on the screen so we can look at it actually together. I can try. Maddie, are you, is there some, Maddie, can you or?
Or go ahead, go ahead, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, just do it through a browser instead of a.
Yeah. Here, see, do you see what I? Alright.
Alright, so you, you can drive then.
Okay, where, would you like me to drive from the top?
Oh, but yeah, you need, um. I mean, I can just drop this and.
I need people to. Are you seeing yourselves? No, they're good, okay. Can you see that?
Yep.
Okay, great.
Well, wait, now change now. Are you?
I'm sharing group document. I'm gonna stop sharing. I'm gonna share once.
But no, what, yeah, it was, why did the format all change?
That's, that's why sometimes I don't want to get into this closely. It's just a, so.
Why did?
Somebody, somebody has a document and we all make comments and, and somebody types in and then we submit as a whole pack.
Yeah, the comments are in the side, but. What's going on?
Because if each of us types in something, um, it, it messes it up. I, well, at least I did that. So. I think if we're all together, we, we make the comments and, and one person does the editing or.
No, no, this, this works. It's fine. I mean, you don't, you can all be, actually be in it at the same time. It compiles them.
Yeah.
It just, it's completely, it's developed for that.
Yeah, well, right now I am on one computer. Um, that's, that's my husband's because mine doesn't have a. Camera or something, but so I, I, if I work on the document from my computer, I couldn't see you or talk to any of you. So I have.
It doesn't, yeah, but this is in the cloud. It's not on your document. It's not on your computer.
So should we start talking about the comments or?
Yeah, well, so why don't we just, we talk and then somebody types in, if, if that works. Yeah, well, so, why don't we just, we talk, and then somebody types in, if, if that works?
So are you, you're in the file. I see, Maddie, I see your icon, and who's Lara, I see your icon.
So all three of you are in, except for me.
And so you're welcome to join.
We can follow.
I, I messed up yesterday somewhere, so I decided not to go in, um.
Matt, would you like me to type in a, a comment on the purpose?
Well, do you have the text?
You can read it to me, and I can create a comment quickly, the one that you wrote down on your Word file?
Oh, yeah, I just, hold on, I just converted it, let me, um.
Or you can, you can go ahead and do it then, since you can also get into the file.
I guess we'll put it here.
I see you.
And I'm just gonna say, consider something like Rhinebeck purpose statement. Is that good?
That sounds great.
Okay. Um, alright, so I think the defined terms are what they are. Charlotte had something to say about dwelling, but we'll just leave that to her. Like, she, that we shouldn't use dwelling. I don't really remember what that was.
Am I the only person who doesn't see Maddie's comment that he just?
No, I don't see.
Maddie, that is a phantom. It's so strange.
Yeah.
There you, oh, there it is, okay.
There's a delay, there's a delay.
There's a delay, okay. Good, okay. Great, thanks.
Alright, so, the, I think the defined terms are kind of, we'll leave it to them. Alright, so then, no more than thirty-eight. So maybe what we'll do is, we'll just, well, maybe we'll just give this to them with all the comments in it, but then we'll just kind of do, like, a paragraph narrative that we'll, we'll all talk about at the end.
Okay.
So there's no more than thirty-eight. Obviously, my question was how that was calculated, right? Calculated being, how do we defend it? Lara was saying, you know, she's, is there any anticipation of adjusting the number?
I'm just curious, because it seems like it's pretty laborious to write code. So it just seems very static. I don't know, I, you know, what if, what if it doesn't work, and maybe there is a process by which you can go in and adjust it, and I'm, I'm just not.
But I, that's a good, that's a good, well, I mean, like, you know, like, when they do things like a fee, for example, right, it just says the current fee, and then the fee schedule is adopted annually. So I think to Lara's point, it's, could you just have a, you know, kind of a, a term sheet of these things that are like, there's thirty-eight of them, and the lottery is held on this day of the, you know.
But now I would.
She was basically just talking about drafting and adoption, you know, could you make it easier to, to adjust the numbers without rewriting the code?
Could I, yeah, it is related to Matt's question, too. I, 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 I mean, I think, yeah, basically, like, what is the defensibility of this number? Without explaining it, it, it's gonna, it's gonna be tricky for people to understand. But I don't know where, where they would explain it. I guess not necessarily in the code.
Well, there, um, there's a narrative that, that, the, right, isn't there, um, there's a narrative that accompanies a local law?
Mm-hmm.
Right, and I would assume that that.
Would help, yeah.
That would be included, but maybe we need to say explicitly that the narrative that accompanies it should include, include the justification. And jumping off from that, my, my concern is, is whether or not this, this limited number represents equal access to, to property rights under the law. And that goes to, you know, is it legally defensible?
Yeah, I think that's a good point.
Yeah, because that's really what you're gonna, you, you're, you know, you're, you have something, you have something that's allowed in your, you know, in your, in your district, right? You know, in the R1 district, and yet, between the number, right, that, you know, the, the finite number, and then the lottery, and then the third variable of the allocation table, and then the fourth final variable, which is how many people applied, and on what street did the applications come from?
Right.
That seems like an awful lot to explain, right? When people say they're being negatively impacted by the code, right? That would be my concern, is that the more complicated it gets, the more complicated and more difficult your defense gets, and anything that starts to sound arbitrary is not going to go well, right?
I agree. I agree entirely, Maddie. I think that's a huge risk here. I mean, if they can resolve, if, if there's, if, if those issues can be resolved, great, but I, I mean, not that I, I, I support having a short-term rental code like this, and that.
Yeah, some kind of code makes sense, but I, it feels very, I mean, I think this first question, too, is related definitely to that list, at least for me, of the different allowances per block, because those seem so random. I mean, it's like, from A to B, from this, this block between, you know, has zero allowed, and was there an explanation anywhere of what, where the zeros come in?
It's actually not, it's not in there. When I spoke to Marie, I mean, they obviously spent a lot of time on this, and, you know, and, and so, you know, I, I, I think it had to do, they were, they were trying to do it by distance, right? And that, and on, on short streets where, you know, where, you know, only a few streets, few front on that street, if you had them next to each other, you'd never achieve the distance. I think, I forget, I think one of these, I don't know if it was Rhinebeck or Lake Placid, but they're, you know, trying to, I think it was Rhinebeck, where they're trying to keep them at eight hundred and fifty feet.
Yeah.
You know.
Okay.
Do, do you agree that a measurable, like, an empirical measurement would be possibly a better way to?
I think, because, because what, what I'm concerned about is, you've essentially, you've, you've allowed the use in the R1, right? And yet, you've then blocked my access to that use based on different variables, and I can't have a predictable outcome, right?
Yeah.
You know, so, and if I go to a purchase a home, I would like to be able to look at the code, you know, and, you know, and have some predictable outcomes, right, as to what's gonna happen around me. Now, now, the other side of that, then people would say was, well, then at least you know that there's only one on your street, and you have this outcome of knowing that there'll, there'll only be one there, right? But like you said, I, it seems, i- it does seem that spacing them physically might be more defensible as opposed to a table. And I guess it's all just, if you do the lottery, then it's the luck of the draw of the lottery, which is, as they pull the applications, is there something within eight hundred and fifty feet of you, right?
Right.
Because then I imagine, then that one gets thrown out, because the other one, you know, the other, so.
And that's the luck of the draw with, and that seems just more direct and simple. I think, once you add in the zeros and the ones and the twos, like, depending, that to me just felt like it was gonna open itself up to a lot of conflict. I don't know exactly how, but I feel like that.
Well, yeah, and the biggest thing is really gonna be, you know, people challenge it, and whether or not you're explaining it, you know, at Village Hall, or explaining it, at, you know, in the court, you gotta be able to explain it, right? And you gotta be able to explain in a way where somebody doesn't find anything arbitrary or capricious, right, if you're in court. But it's not great that they find it arbitrary at Village Hall either, right? And even though you put a lot of thought into it, doesn't necessarily mean that it's not arbitrary. Right? Because, you know, I mean, I, I don't know, I doubt that this, these things haven't been on the books long enough to really be, you know, to have survived legal challenge, you know. I'm not aware of anybody that came up with this table, and, and they went to a lot of effort with, you know, with good reason, trying to, I think part of it was, you know, the, the lots are non-standard, so, you know, is it every other lot? When some lots are forty-five feet, you know, some, you know, are corner lots, and, but, I, I mean, I think that, I think it was Rhinebex that had the, you know, had the distance, the eight hundred and fifty feet, I think it was Rhinebeck, it could have been Placid, I'm not sure. It must have been Rhinebeck, I don't think it would work in Lake Placid.
It's, yeah, yeah, I, I, I was, I was just having a lot of trouble sitting with that. Like, why is it that, just trying to put myself in the shoes of the homeowner on a zero block, or a different, a bunch of different homeowners on a zero allowed STRs block, whether you're in the shoes of someone who wants to have an STR, or who doesn't want to have an STR next to them. And then, you know, there's another block that has one allowed or two allowed. And then, again, if you're the neighbor that doesn't want it, or you're the person that wants it, you're like, great, I scored, that I can continue to have my STR on my block, but this other block can't, and it just sets up like a unfairness, maybe, I don't know how to say it, more league, you know, using legal language, but.
No, no, and it's really just more the spirit of it that's important to get at, right? The lawyers can figure out how to paper it.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I think that.
Yeah, I could see it creating neighborly conflict, and if the whole point of, like, as Matt says often to us, is like, you know, when we're starting these discussions, is like, what is the intent, right? Like, if the intent is to sort of make sure that this is regulated and creates less conflict and less, sort of, issue, you know, issues in the, in the neighborhood, and the R1 neighborhoods, then maybe it's not gonna necessarily achieve that by creating that imbalance or something. Sorry, I'm, I'm, I guess I feel strongly. I didn't, I didn't know.
This is an important, it's an important piece of code, it really is. I mean, whether or not you want them or don't want them.
Yeah, no, I, yeah, and I.
You're gonna, you're gonna, it's, it affect, it, because, look, I mean, you know, the more tourism takes off, I mean, we've, we've obviously, those, you know, all of us on the call have been here long enough to see that it's been picking up every winter, like, the winters used to be just like a ghost town. You know, and it, that, it hasn't been like that for years. You know, so I mean, it's just, it's, the, the season is extending, there, you know, there are, and obviously, they took advantage of, you know, Airbnbs to, you know, because there's a shortage of local housing, and it's probably preferred anyway, so. You know, I mean, it's, you know, Lake Placid was really overrun with, you know, with Airbnb's, because it was more money, right? It was, you know, and so what it did is it just kind of gobbled up affordable housing. You know, because it was just, you made more money by doing, you know, short-term rentals to tourists than you did to somebody working at the hotel, you know.
Right.
So, the, you know, not surprisingly, that's, that's where they went, so.
Yeah, I mean, I do, yeah, I think, I, I, I just want to clarify, I don't feel strongly when we're, I feel strongly about the need for it to be written sort of fairly and well. I think, I think a lot of effort has been made, but sometimes it can, it needs to be sort of clarified, that's all.
But this, this comes down to the chart of the, the streets allow whichever, when I was reading it, well, basically, it's, my question is, why don't we allow everybody? You know, you can say, alright, limited to thirty-eight, but everybody can apply. Or, you know, when you draw a, a lottery, then if, you know, the, the neighbors happen to be right next to each other, then maybe, you know, you have to draw again these two, you draw one, or something like that.
Yeah, let's, let's try to go through the document, though, because if we keep, yeah, we got a lot of.
I jumped ahead, I didn't.
No, 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 that's fine, no, that's fine, but let's, um, no, 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 let's just, just so we can, so we're not here all night, well, um, where, I don't, I don't remember, who's sharing?
I'm sharing, it's Stephanie, I'm sharing.
Okay, yeah.
Would you like me to scroll further?
Alright, so, we have the STRs by public lottery. Rhinebeck does the lottery. Villa, Placid just, you know, just, you just apply.
There's no limitation in Placid?
On the number?
They only have the, the nights, not the.
Yeah, they're not limiting the number.
Interesting, yeah, I, I noticed in Boss, the city of Boston doesn't limit the number either, which I think is interesting.
Yeah, and that's why I think the, the purpose statement from Placid, and everything they did, is more in line with what, with what our reality is, right, was that, look, I mean, it, you know, tourism is, it's a double-edged sword, right? And here, it, and while you, you know, we all want a vibrant main street, it, it, you know, it's, um, y- you can get chased out of your own quiet little village, right, if things become too popular. So the, you know, it's not that you don't want people to come, but there's also the reality of trying to, you know, you know, you just to maintain a residential feel in the neighborhood. So I think that Lake Placid is much more in line with, you know, with the, you know, an in, you know, in, a rapid influx of these things, and kind of, you know. But they did not limit the, you know, Matt, because I think it's more, first of all, it's larger, you know, and it also goes into North Elba, which is the next town. So, you know, I think it's just there, it's just there, you know, but again, this is also everybody's first, first, first stab at it, right? I'm sure these things are gonna get modified, right? Which, that's why, you know, I think you kind of look at these and just kind of say, well, what are, you know, when you look at the intent, what are the most important things, right, the must-haves? You know, so, here we are on the lottery, and I, 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 I guess the lottery is great, because if you're gonna, I think with the, with a number, I think you do have to have a lottery. I don't think it really should be just kind of, you know, you know, whoever applies first, or.
Yeah, it's really not equitable if it's, if it's first come, first served, right?
Yeah, and you, and how do you know, right?
I mean, if you buy, buy something, if you buy a house in September, right, you don't have, if they're all scarfed up, you don't get access, right?
So I think the lottery, I think the lottery makes sense, and it's, I would imagine it's defensible. C is the property tax IDs, the STRs have to have a permit to operate, the STR permit would be good for one year. I think one year seems very short from a practical perspective. You know, just that you're permitted, and then, you know, you kind of turn around, and you're not only not knowing whether or not you're gonna be renting again, because then you've got the, then you've got the lottery. And then on top of that, obviously, you know, later in the document, there's this allocation, so.
Yeah, you know, I, I have to say, the constellation of criteria that you need to meet does not point to access.
That people will be able to do it?
Yeah, I mean, it, it points, it, it, you know, it, it does seem, it seems unduly burdensome, the constellation of, of criteria one needs to meet in order to access this. And I wonder if that, you know, it hadn't occurred to me until just now, but having something unduly, having a law that, or these sort of restrictions that make access to, access to lawful property rights, unduly burdensome, cannot be, I mean, would, I think, would meet with a, a, a meaningful challenge, and a, a challenge that could actually prevail, you know, a plaintiff, I mean, like, if you think about it that way, right? Un, like, if it's un, if there is an undue burden on you, that prevents you from accessing what is supposed to be, you know, illegally available property, right? No. I, and it's so fundamental, that, I don't know. It, it just occurred to me, the undue burden idea, but I, it's worth.
Yeah, and, and again, I think it's, I think you, on some point, you gotta just kind of move forward with something, right? Make your, you know, look at the risk, figure out how you can mitigate most of the risks, and then move forward, but, so I think I had written in my memo, it was just my, my opinion before the boards. I understand the use selection of a lottery to offer at least the possibility of STRs to all owners who want to participate, but I wonder if it will serve to make the process so burdensome, and the outcome so unpredictable as to eliminate at least some of those who might otherwise have participated, thereby potentially reducing the available visitor lodging and any related economic impacts currently known or not yet identified. I think if people could just be kind, would just, it, it depends, I mean, if, if they expand the number of nights, I think we have sixty nights in here, right? You know, so the question of is, if it's, you know, sixty nights times, you know, two hundred and ninety, whatever it is, is that, is that going to be enough, right?
But if you have more than one year, and you only get thirty-eight houses that can do it, then let's just say there are fifty people who are. houses that can do it, then let's just say there are fifty people who are, who wants to do it. Then the rest of the twenty-two people gotta, you know, gotta wait for two years or, or something, so. If you have very limited number, then the short time would be good. If you have unlimited number, then long term would be good. That's how I feel. If I want to get into this, I would say, okay. You know, there are only five people who can get it, then, then, then next year is somebody else's turn. If everybody can get it, then go on. That's, 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 that's why the, the thirty, the thirty-eight number itself is not questionable, but, but definitely will be challenged.
Yeah, I'm curious to hear what they say, the explanation for that number is. Does anyone know how many, is there any sort of tally of how many there are right now? Thirty-eight, the number thirty-eight sort of reflects of where we are now. Five or thirty-eight that have been counted. Interesting, okay, that's what I was curious about. So the idea is to keep it static, but.
It seems very low to me, though.
That seems low, yeah, but it, the idea would be to keep it static around, if, if that were the case, then that, the idea would be to keep the number about the same. Definitely, it seems, uh, uh, which again, I don't know if that makes sense, that was my question at the beginning, but, but then allow different people to be able to participate so as to distribute the load on the different neighborhoods. I do think that the, the selection of streets and this, um, and this idea that, the selection of streets and the limited number is, is about creating, um, sort of an equal, this, uh, equal distribution of the impact, right? So the impact is, is, uh, distributed across the entire village. Village, yeah, I get that, but I don't see how the selection of streets where some streets don't allow, or some blocks, I mean, if it's a distance thing, I get that. My block, for, for instance, where I am, I am that block between Cherry and Paulding on Academy Street. And so there are two, there are two addresses that face each other on that street. On our block, and so neither of us enjoy the access to participate here. Yeah, and, uh, you know, I didn't check on Paulding, but, you know, in part, there is a, there is currently an address directly adjacent to me that is a short-term rental. And this property is diagonally across from the property that's across the street from me. Yeah, so doesn't that seem like that's kind of problematic? Because like, from, from a property owner's perspective, you know, it's almost like you could say, and if a property adjacent to you does have the privilege and yes, you don't. Yeah, yeah, there is an inequity. Equity, so if you're trying to do, even if the intent again is about evening out distribution, then it should be, I don't know, again, I'm, I'm curious, I, I feel that that distribution, I get kind of maybe where it's coming from, but I wonder how problematic it's going to be. It's not, by, by identifying streets, the law is no longer agnostic, right? If it were just a number. The distance, that Ryan Beck applies. Yeah, I think that's, to me, that seems more defensible.
I, I agree, I think that that would be, uh, I, I think when you, if you get into a position where you have to explain it, that I think you can at least just say, we're, we're trying to, we're trying to reduce the concentration of these things. But you're not targeting streets specifically and determining what they can or can't do, right? You know, you're saying that everybody has the same right, but they don't, right? Because it's, while it's an allowed use in the R1 and the B1, it, it has then been eliminated from your block, right? So it's, uh, I, I just think you should really just say that, I, I just, I, my sense is that it's going to be a lot easier to just explain that, I would take a, a linear distance, right? To just say it's eight hundred feet, a thousand feet, whatever, you know, maybe consider, you know, in lieu of, in lieu of the allocation table, you know, you know, a linear distance, you know, to address, you know, to address the, you know, the concern of concentration of impact, right? Cause it's really concentration of impact, right?
But it's like, yeah, exactly, it's concentration of impact, but you can't then forego equity of access, which is.
Yeah, I think that's a good point, that's a great point, right, without, without limiting.
That sacrificing equity. Of access to this property.
Yeah, because that's really where you are absolutely going to have to explain, why is my block a zero, right? And you have, and you, you know, it, I, I, I don't know that you even want to try to explain that. I think, I just.
It is subjective, right? Because if the adjacent property owner chooses not to participate in STR and there is an STR desert around the corner, right? It means I could have an STR in my home or my neighbor across the street could have an STR in his or her home. And those, you know, the impact would be just, would be the same as if my adjacent neighbor had chosen to continue doing. The other interesting thing about the lottery system that I just thought of, just in sort of role-playing through this, is like, so let's say, not to, let's say there's a situation, it's not necessarily your street, where, you know, it's a short street and a long street. And that long street currently has a, uh, air, a, a short-term rental, and. Are you asking for a friend? I'm just trying to make it not specific. Necessarily, hypothetically speaking, if, if that existing STR somehow gets drawn in the lottery three years in a row, is that gonna, you know, like, how do you, with a lottery, it's just a lottery, so what happens if they're always drawn first? Does it work that way, or is there a way of balancing it, that if you had it the year prior, you wouldn't get it? So then someone on a short street, let's say, that really wants to have an, a, a short-term rental can have one, um, the following year. Not talking about you. No, no, I got it, I got it. No, I, I think that's interesting, because it, it also makes people like, hey, if you, if you had this, if you enjoyed this opportunity last year, you need to go to the back of the line this year and wait to see if anybody else in the village who didn't get to do it last year wants to do it, and, right? Yeah, if it's about equity of distribution of, yeah. And that's about run, the running of the lottery. Um, team, I added this note, I think that you can see it here. Okay, are you happy with that? Does that, is that reflective of what we were talking about, the linear distance? Equity of access, we're good? Okay, I'm gonna go, I'm gonna scooby back up here, don't get dizzy. Okay, so here, here we are, we're talk, okay, so here we are, and this, the public lottery. Do we want to make a comment about the, about the way the lottery is administered? Because the, the way the lottery is administered is not defined within this law. Yeah, I think that's a good, I just can't, it just, in playing the hypothetical, that just sort of came up as a scenario that might be problematic. If someone gets it three years, you're running, then someone's going to say it's rigged. They to- totally, of course, like grieving taxes, it's rigged. So if it's explained how that works or how it's administered, like, is there some, some kind of um, explanation of how the lottery is administered to prevent? Here, yeah, so. Maybe not even to prevent, but what are, what are, how is it administered, even just as a general question? Let's see, there, there is this, and so there, there is a limited description here of how the lottery runs, right? Priority is given. Yeah, I did, I remember that, but it didn't explain, oh, does it say? If you've been drawn before, you'll be, go back to the back of the line? I don't think it does say that.
Not to that extent.
And maybe that's problematic, I don't know, I, I. Sending people to the back of the line? Yeah, I don't know, because I don't have. Running these kinds of lotteries, so I don't know if it's a good. Yeah, I mean, I think. Or a bad tactic, I don't know. Well, I think that by applying that requirement, that removes, that removes the random chance, right? You're reducing the random chanceness, right? So it's a little, it's more controlled, you're controlling for equity. And then it's not a, it, and, and it, and maybe that's fine, right? Maybe it's completely okay that it's not one hundred percent chance, right? And also, maybe is the purpose of the law also in addition to making sure short-term rentals are compatible with the neighborhood character and we, we maintain neighborhood character? Are, is there also something about this law that the purpose of this law is also to ensure, ensure equitable access to this opportunity, right? I don't know, I'm asking. You know, yeah, yeah, I don't know.
But, yeah, I mean, it's there and the purpose statement is to provide income, but you're, if, if it isn't equitable, right? Then that's a problem, if you're basically saying that if it, if you, if you need the ability to do this, right? To, you know, to age in place or to, you know, or just to, you know, the property taxes go up, um, school taxes go up, you know, and that stuff happens that, you know, you, you want the ability to do this, but, you know, so I guess the, what the lottery is trying to do is provide, you know.
Well, it's saying it, it's going to provide the, an even level playing field for everyone, right? But there is a difference between it being equal and equitable, right? Because, because if by chance, right, chance di- di- dictates that somebody gets a, a permit three years in a row, is, is that, is that what the law should be, does the law, is the law, you know, reinforcing that? Or is the law protecting everyone, making sure that everyone can have access? Because sometimes, you know, and, 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 and while I'm saying that, I'm wondering like, you know, equ, you know, equal versus equitable, is that, is that exercise? Could that exercise be construed as, you know, a, an undue burden on someone who really just wants to, hey, by chance, I got chosen, right?
And these things get really complicated. I don't want to say, you know, you, you, it's, it's very hard to put it in language. And every, every bit of detail to, to do this and that, because things always change, the things happen. But I think if, if there are less than thirty-eight, then everybody gets one. If there are more than thirty-eight, then there will be people who don't get it. And chances are that they may not get it next year. Or the following year, and then these people are going to say, what, you know, are, are, are we, are we in or, or not?
Right, it's too difficult, right? I guess, I think that, I actually think that the, if, if we consider, I think by, by making a, I don't know if I want to say priority, but by including, including equity in the, in the consideration, in the purpose considerations, then, then we're making sure, then we're, then we're actually, we're ba- balancing against that undue burden, right, that we had identified early, I think.
Lottery is, is a, is a good way to, to do it, um, but there, but there are a, a lot of problems, because the, the number is very limited. That's, that's what the, the, the basic, uh, question will come back to, to say. How you choose, why you, you have a number of thirty-eight, you know, um, this, this is the thing there, and then, you know, if, if as Laura said, well, you know, you go to back of the line. Are you, but the, the two that didn't get it, they're the front of the line, but because you're drawing a lottery, you may, chances you may not draw one at all. And that's, you know, what, if that happens, people are not going to happen to be happy, then what? I mean, so there is no referee or no judge or anything in the middle to, to say what to do to resolve this problem, then people are going to be unhappy. And, and, and that is a, that only creates more problems than, than benefit.
Do, do, how do, do people feel strongly about, about the, about this sort of like, this, about equitable ac- access to this?
We have no idea.
No, no, I'm not asking the, I don't mean about the town, I mean, the, among the.
I, I guess you just don't really know how it's going to play out and how, and how you would, and how you would administer it, right? So if you've, if you won last year, you're held back, well, before the first, you know, you know, but how many of them are held back and in what order, right? You've, you've done, you know, you've gotten it in one year, you've gotten it two years, are there separate buckets? I think it just becomes a nightmare to try and figure out how you're holding them back and trying to give other people equity, right, you know?
Right, right. Do they draw from the, the pile that was declined first or something, maybe? I don't know, I. You mean the discard pile? Do you drop in the discard pile the following year? They, they have priority and then, but then what if two people on the discard pile are within the linear distance requirement? It's like a really bad, sorry to say this, but it's like, um, a really, uh, it's reminding me of Monopoly or something, like, it's like a really vision of Monopoly. Stuck in an endless loop and everyone's angry.
Oh, but things do happen, then the ones that you, you think it's, eh, maybe it won't happen, but, but that will be exactly what happens, it's really bad when, when, when you get into that situation. So I, I think there, I, I, I don't know, but that, this is, this is where still comes the basic question is, what is the number we should consider or we can allow? Because why some people are allowed, some people not allow, you know, who is in the position to do that?
I guess should, does, does this come back to also just saying, should we just determine whether we're gonna ask about? Oh, I don't even know how to say this question. I guess it's about how, how is this lottery administered in relation to equitable access? And also subsequent access in the following years, like, is there, ha- has that been thought through or determined?
So you're basically saying you give preference to last year's losers?
Yep, yes, that's what that, that's what this is about.
You know, it's there, you know, you, assuming they apply again. My God, I, how in the world would you track all that? I mean, I guess.
I know, this is like, it's really complicated. Well, you know, I can bet your, I can bet your bottom dollar, as well as my own, that those who are in the, the discard pile will be keeping track of this.
Yeah, no, the, well, those that have, that are still interested, right?
Yes, 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 right, the two criteria need to be met.
Yeah, and, and if they're not, but yet you don't, you know, so you have to wait for their new application to come in, look at the results of the last lottery, and is it just one lottery back, or is it?
Maybe there's a question on the application, like, did you apply and were denied last year or something, I don't know.
Seems way too difficult to manage to me, but I, it's perfect, I mean, if you want to put a question there, just say, ha- or maybe just, is there any consideration for, you know, for it to, you know, to make, to, to provide equity, right? Is there any consideration to, you know, to giving preferential treatment to people that were, you know, the, the last, you know, last, last year's losers, I guess, or.
You still cannot guarantee, because they're still drawing a lot, they can still not draw one at all. I mean, but.
No, but I mean, if there's like five, let's say, they could still draw one, I think it's still not guaranteed, because they, they could come upon other limitations. One, if it's, if it is a distance limitation, or if it's, if you're on that zero block, you can apply every year. Yes, right, yeah, you can just apply to avoid. You, I have added this question here, is there consideration to provide equity in subsequent years to applicants who are not drawn in the lottery?
Yeah, maybe the prior, maybe the prior year's lottery? I mean, subsequent is clear, but just so, when they read it.
Yep, 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 yep.
And I guess, let's just only talk about one year. I don't think they can go back multiple years, it just.
Can you, can you add, is, is there consideration in the administration of the lottery?
Thank you.
Because then it's clear that we're asking about and how, or in how the lottery is being administered? Cause maybe they have figured that out.
Okay.
To ensure equity. Equity of access.
Equity of access, I think is good to just clarify.
Okay, there, there it is, team, see it? Okay. All right, whoop, I'm going to scroll back up, don't get dizzy. Okay, so here we were, and then we were talking about one year. We're, okay, and we're like, huh, all of these. Ah, criteria.
Of this, yeah.
I find R1 B1 restrictions, you know, similar, right? To the other restrictions, like, hey, wait, this combined with all these other things, this feels limiting.
I guess what would the intent of, like, what are the other zones? Industrial.
There's light, light industrial. But remember, residential, residential use is permitted in all zones. So what this means is, hey, you might have a residence and in a.
A light industrial.
In light industrial or, uh, B or, or in B3, right? But why can't you participate?
Rock Street, for example, you know, several of those are, well, that's a good point.
Rock Street has one. I think in that list, Rock Street has one. Our street doesn't have any.
The Pugh?
Uh, we are the Kimball. We're not allowed from Constitution and the Boulevard Corner till the end to the park where.
Well, that's why, that's exactly why you think about, you know. I, 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 I wouldn't want to be put in the position of defending this allocation table.
Yeah, we see Wall, Wall, from Wall Street to.
Wall to end, yeah, I see you. I see you, Sue. I see you, you were seen by me.
It's not like we, we are going to do one, but, but this is, this definitely a question.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, I'm scrolling back up.
Yeah.
Hang on to your eyeballs. Okay, here we are, all right. Whoops, yeah, public lottery. Okay, Noah's share is allowed for property eight tax lots, within eight tax lots on a street on either side or directly across the street from. Now, see, this, I believe, H solves for that grid, right?
Yeah, I'm not sure why this is in there. Well, I guess they want both, they want the allocation table and the, you know.
Right, well, because if you, if it's a permitted street, like, uh, parrot or personage, they're very long, right? So you want to be able to say, hey, on, on, on those streets where it is permitted. And you've got total, you've got bank of lots to choose from, they're saying.
I even wonder, I even wonder what that does too. I mean, cause you, you know, and again, this just, you can just kind of throw a wrench into all of this, which is, you know, is there really such a bad thing to put them right next to each other and let them deal with each other?
Right, and then it takes the impact away from somewhere else.
Yeah, you know, I mean, so there's no, there are no easy answers. I mean, it really depends on how good the host is, how good the guests are, how well the property is managed.
Which is, yeah, which is why, like, when this first came up, my, my first thought was, and I think Matt, maybe you alluded to this too, is like, maybe you just start in phases and you first just kind of track and regulate a little bit, where you make sure that everyone who is an Airbnb or a STR, everyone who is participating is just track, you know, you have to sign up, you have to permit it. Um, and you don't really try and limit it until you understand how it's all functioning or something. I don't know. That would be a more conservative approach, I think. Um, and I don't think that's the intent. I think that intent is, is more.
To create an undue burden to accessing the law?
I think it is to limit, to limit, not, not to just regulate, not to just make sure that it's, it's not affecting neighborhood, uh, character. I think it's also to keep it, I mean, I guess you, yeah, you argue that reducing the number of them helps.
Retain, retain character. I mean, yeah, reducing the number reduces the impact, right? It's a mitigation technique.
So I get that, but I don't know, it just seems, seems like maybe it would be just, yeah, but anyways, that, that's, it's going to be tricky, yeah.
And these, I think, we, we don't need comments on any of these, because this, these are really all tied to the allocation table. This, I think, is weird, like, if you have a, if you have a big hat K, I think, if you have a large house that has multiple bedrooms, we're only saying one off-street parking space. It almost seems like you need to treat these the same as hotels.
Well, I, yeah, if you have a three-bedroom house, as I do, next door to me, not my, I don't have a three-bedroom house, but my, my neighbor adjacent who is, has a short-term, runs a short-term rental, there's three bedrooms there. And there are frequently, there, there, or I shouldn't say frequently, there have been six and more people staying at that.
And they didn't all come in one car.
And they did not come in one car, they came in multiple cars. Three to four cars.
I don't see my comment here, I don't, is it, do you see it there?
Yes, uh, hang on a second, it is, oh, wait, uh, practical concept now, wait.
It's basically just as it.
Here it is, wait, no.
Oh, yeah, there's the question there.
One per bedroom question? I think that's a reasonable question.
I, I, that's, yeah, I think we should just ask that question, just say, I'm not quite understanding why you just do one? Because you, you can get in, look, it doesn't really matter if it's a one or two-bedroom, it's close enough. But if you get three, four, five, six, you get a large house.
Yeah.
You know, that, you know, that could, that could sleep a bunch of people. It's likely a bunch of people are driving and meeting, right? Or they're taking the train and maybe everything's fine, but you gotta, you gotta manage to the extremes that they're driving.
And it does create, it does create congestion on the street parking, for sure, without a doubt. If they're parking there and nobody else.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, sixty nights.
It, it seems short to me.
Yeah.
I would consider at least ninety, you know.
How do people feel? How do other people feel? Cause I.
Yeah, I agree, I, I think if you're gonna, it's that.
And that's fine, and I think the why only sixty is a fine, that's, well, basically, yeah.
Yeah, and then here, two nights, I'm like, hey, why not one?
I don't, yeah, this I don't, I'm not understanding why we, yeah, I'm not understanding why we're getting so far into the way they're running there, you know?
Their own business, yeah, I feel like it's up to the.
Yeah, they want one night, let them be one night, I mean.
Yeah.
See, I think this goes to.
I, I could see it being, um, like, they don't want it to be like, one person comes in.
Oh, it's multiple turns on a weekend, yeah.
Garbage and then.
Or multiple turns on a weekend, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Say one, one, without limiting the number of nights, you could just say one, one rental per weekend or something, you know, one. But I don't know how you would state that, but.
Uh, that's probably is what they're trying to do, because they probably realize that the biggest, the biggest business is on the weekends. And so you could have turns of room, you know.
Yeah, and it's Saturday and then a Sunday, three.
It's, yeah, and it's the check-in and the checkout that are, you know, there's a lot of commotion that goes on, a lot of door slamming, a lot of.
And hopefully a cleaning company somewhere in there.
Yeah, yeah, there's a lot of activity represented by the transition.
Yeah.
Are you going to say one group?
Or trigger.
One group of guests or, or.
I think it's fine, I, I think it's fine, I.
Should we remove the why not one comment or should we leave it?
I think we should, I, 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 because I get what they're trying to do now, you know, I mean.
I, I get what they're, they're trying to do, but I also think I have, um, I mean, I, I was sort of, when I, when I asked, why not one? I was thinking about my own experience and how I can imagine coming here and like, maybe going to the, being like, oh, hey, I found it, we can stay, we can, you know, we can watch the whole movie down at the river, right? On it, and because we find an Airbnb, we can stay overnight, right? I, I do, I do respect that the, if it's one, only one night, you could, you know, over a long weekend, you might have one, two or three guests coming and turning over, um.
Yeah.
You know, but, yeah, I, I don't know.
You keep it in as a question.
Yeah, we, I don't, I, I mean, we can take it out too, if you guys want me to take it out.
No, no, I think it's fine.
Okay.
Only.
This one.
Only Occupy private corporations, I, I just don't know, I, I don't even know, can an LLC not be a primary residence? Is that, can you not put your property into an LLC and also?
No, you totally can, you can, you can, any, you can own, if you're corporate into any kind of a company entity, you can own property, you can have assets, they can be real property assets and you can live in them. There's, this is not, this is, and, this is unreasonable and indefensible, I think.
I think, yeah, unenforce, like, not.
Cause I will tell you, if I'm going to do this and it's my primary residence, I want to hold it in LLC if somebody gets hurt.
Yep. Yeah.
This, we discussed this last time, we were, we're going through this. Yeah. I, maybe put a comment in there, okay.
We did, it says.
Yeah, it's there, yeah.
Okay, so P is they're not transferable, makes sense. Q, the host arrangement, must live within the boundaries of the village. Must live within the boundaries of the village at the time the STR is occupied and must be available onsite within twenty minutes. How do we say, but don't they live in their houses, they're primary residents?
So I do, I.
Some of them say the, the host or the, the owner may not be there when there's guests, but there will be a agent, so the agent is not staying there, but it.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what they're saying.
The local agent.
Yeah, so the, so if there is a problem, instead of calling nine-one-one, call the agent, then the agent will come within twenty minutes.
Yeah.
And that's fine, but that's, I think that was what.
But I, I, if I may, I don't, I think that within the boundaries of the, of the Village of Cold Spring is, is an unreasonable, is unreasonable and does nothing, that isn't a value add. I think that if we're saying that the agent or the host must be available twenty-four seven to respond onsite within twenty minutes, that, you know, that should be enough. That means you could be, your agent could be located, you know, in Garrison, your agent could be in Nelsonville, your agent could be, you know, could live in Fishkill. I mean, I think that if we're concerned, if Q is expressly concerned with maintenance and responsiveness to the needs of an STR guest, so they don't start relying on public services or they're ne- or disturbing their neighbors. If that's what Q is about, then I don't think it should matter if they live within the village.
Okay.
Per- personally.
Yeah.
I don't know, just.
Yeah, okay.
I agree, but.
That's fine, yeah, I think, I agree.
Okay.
Yeah, if we, we stay clearly within twenty minutes, it can be anywhere.
Yeah, it should be, yeah, must be available, that's really what, I, I feel like that's, that's what's at issue, like, um, residency of the agent or responding host.
Are we causing traffic accidents by saying twenty minutes and not thirty?
No.
I mean, I would increase it to thirty, I think that's more reasonable too, but that's just.
Or we could say timely, right? Because.
Then leave it open, but then that's going to be.
Well, yeah, if it's an hour, then.
I think you say in under an hour, I mean, again, like, twenty minutes, like, it's not an, I mean, I, I get it's an emergency sometimes, but like.
I think that my, I, I may be wrong, but I think that I know of somebody who, who has an STR who lives, lives in the city primarily, stays in the city, has guests come up here, doesn't attend to them, is not within twenty minutes at any stretch.
Well, they have a, well, they don't have an agent either, so.
I don't believe there's an agent. I believe that they are nearby, on call, right?
But, but I think, I think.
I think that's what this might be addressing.
No, no, I agree, I, I know, I totally see the intent and I, I agree with it. You want someone that's available in a timely sense, but I just, twenty just seems really like strict somehow, I don't, and, because I'm always late to everything, so.
I, I will, I'll keep it there, because, um.
Okay.
Yeah.
Fine.
You know, twenty, thirty minutes, it's, it's, if you do twenty minutes, people arrive thirty minutes, so.
That's me.
Minutes, then it could be forty, it could be an hour, so.
Okay, okay, I agree.
We're like all the grandmothers.
Okay, all right, uh, our host shall maintain a record of the number of guests. And I, I, I like your comment, Matt.
Yeah, yeah, I think that, I think that's, as long as they're keeping details, I mean, I get why they want to do it, they just want to see what's going on, otherwise you have no control over how many nights. You know?
And is it, is it enough? Okay, sorry, never mind. Next up, prominently dis- display at all times, the contact names, phone numbers, host and agent. Yeah, I think, that's smart, that's a reasonable ask, no.
Yeah.
There was one, they said, it should be on your door or, or, or something.
The number, that was the number of the house.
Yeah, I think there was.
Yeah, that's this one here, you're thinking Sue, you, letter U.
Oh, okay.
But Maddie, I think that's a good, that's a good flag, right? Cause it doesn't say.
Yeah, I, I think they mean to the, to the renter, not to the, not to the neighbors, but I'm not quite sure, you could read it kind of either way.
The neighbors.
Well, I mean, you could say, look, it's been forty-five minutes, it's been an hour, nobody's responded, what are the, where, where do you call the host?
Right.
I'm the neighbor and having an issue. And your issue is with the guests, right? So I didn't know if maybe they are saying that you're supposed to be able, that neighboring properties are supposed to be able to find a phone number and get ahold of these people.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
You're not managing your guests, you know?
Right, right, right.
So I'm not sure.
Okay.
It does say that no signage can define it as an STR, so obviously, I don't know that.
A shout from the rooftops here, who you are and what your phone number is. Okay, all right, I'm scrolling to the application procedure.
This stuff's all pretty straightforward.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, they're talking about confirming the STR as a primary residence, I don't, I, I'm not sure, just, just because you get on a driver's license, and a voter registration even, as long as you own the property, you can be registered to vote from that property, it doesn't need to be your primary. Yeah. So I don't, I, the only thing I'm aware that, you know, confirms that it's your primary is the, is your taxes, right?
Yep.
You know?
Yep. Okay, so should we add that? I mean, I think that's, that's a good point.
Yeah, that's the, that's already in there.
Okay.
Yeah, Matt, your comment, Matt.
But I also, I think that this is, um, this is also, uh, that, you know, requiring a combination reinforces that, right? It makes it harder for somebody to, you know, spoof, which people who are invested in this before this law comes into effect are going to be, they're going to be, you know, interested in doing as little as possible to prove and demonstrate that this is their primary exist, uh, primary residence, right?
Well, I mean, the, the water bill's a gimme, I mean, you know, I mean, that's, you know, unless you have a property with no water.
Well, right, but the, you, it could be your primary residence and you could receive, you could have a water bill, but it, you could still live somewhere else, right? I guess. Right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I do think the, I think the tax return is maybe is, is one of the, it is definitely something that should be included. But I think the constellation of voter registration, driver's license, water bill. Yeah, water bill, I don't know, water bill, that doesn't prove residence.
That's what I'm saying, you have to water, everybody's going to have a water bill.
Right, 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 right. Every building, every seat has one. Okay, yeah, I don't know how, how else, I, I don't know how else you would, you would prove that, um, unless you were to actually need, you know, require affidavits of your neighbors to confirm, yeah, this is, this is their primary residence, they are my neighbor, right? I mean, that would be, that would be one way to do it, right? Have all of your surrounding property owners confirm that, yeah, this is their primary residence. I see them there, you know, the majority of the year.
So when you, before you draw the lottery, your neighbors.
Yeah, I don't know, yeah, I don't know if we can be drawing like third parties into.
Yeah, well, no, 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 I, I, I get that. I guess I'm just saying that, that's really, you know, this other stuff even, it might be worth your while to take a loss on your taxes to save it, right? To it's somewhere else, right? To say, oh yeah, this is my primary residence, I still live in Brooklyn and rent your apartment and, right? I don't know. This is a hard one to thread, right? It's a little.
We'll just let it be for now.
It's a little, it requires a private eye. Okay, I'm gonna keep scrolling.
All right, liability, 2 million, 2 million.
Oh, sorry. Yep, yep.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm not sure how, I, I, I mean, I guess that they, I, I'm not sure how the village can.
I'm not sure why the village is, has jurisdiction here to require somebody to have GL for their property.
On the village doesn't want to.
I mean, I think that most, I think anybody who's carrying a mortgage is gonna have, is gonna have this kind of insurance, right?
Well, may not be the, the.
You might not have those amounts. You might not have 2 million, 2 million.
Yeah.
Most are probably gonna require 1 million.
Well, you want to put a question in there or say?
How did you arrive at this and why is this appropriate? I don't know, is that, how do people feel?
We've asked the question to say, you know, where is that amount from? How is this determined or?
That does seem very, very much higher than. I don't know. It's hard to tell.
Location of house number displayed on the property, off-street parking.
Indemn, let's say, sign and indemnification, hold harmless, indemnify the village of Cold Spring.
Yeah, what is the, what are the claims, what claims would be brought against the village of Cold, Cold Spring here? Do, do we know? I, I don't know.
I, I don't know, but there is, there might be a, not related, but might be an example. It's on TV, there's advertisements say, if you walk in the street of New York City or something, if you fall down, then call us, we'll get you money or something. But this, this is the, you know, I, I would say this is probably a similar or, or relevant example. If you fall down in the street, Cold Spring, you say Cold Spring Village is not taking care of the road or something and you.
Yeah, but this is private property, right? So the host is.
But this is.
We're asking the host to indemnify the village for claims arising out of use of the private property. And that is just not the business of the village.
Hmm.
It, it's, it's not a reason, this, I don't think this is a reasonable requirement. Do we require hotels indemnify the village for claims arising out of me, out of the use of a, a property?
Yeah, that's, yeah.
So this is, this here is arising out of actions or inactions in the operation, occupancy, use or maintenance of private property. Like, that's just bonkers to me. That's, anyway, I won't go on about it.
Yeah, I'm not sure where it came from. So my question was just, you know, is this more burdensome than B and B or hotel? And I don't, how do you justify the disparity?
What was the one thing we commented the last time?
Yeah.
Okay.
We have consensus, okay. Shared driveway. My comment here is that the, let, this should be less about a letter of support for the applicant and more an affirmative statement that the neighbor agrees to this shape, this use. Right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
By, by guests, by paying guests. That's, I feel like that's something that the neighbor should.
Are there a lot of shared driveways in the village?
Um, there are enough of them that have created problems in the past. There aren't, there aren't many, I don't think.
Yeah, interesting.
But they do exist and they have been.
Oh yeah, Fair Street, right? Fair Street might have some, I don't know.
Oh yeah, I guess, no, 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 not Fair Street. Well, Marion.
Marion.
Marion has, has some, yeah. Okay, we already, we litigated the lottery system earlier. Do we want to engage in more robust litigation?
No.
Okay.
I mean, I don't.
Why not? All right. Exterior lighting, yes, I concur. Maddie, your note here about this being more restrictive, more limiting.
Yeah.
I mean, not that I don't think the lights should be turned off, I just think it needs to be.
Yes, I should be the same.
Supportable, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. May not be used to host parties or gatherings or other gatherings or events.
And I, yeah, no, and I think, you know, your comment last week, Stephanie, was very helpful is that, you know, for me, I'm just like, well, wait a minute. Why can't you rent the house and have a party? But obviously what that ultimately does, you know, say you're allowed to do 60, 60 nights, that's 30 weekends. So you're essentially, you know, subjecting me, the house next door, as opposed to one family in it, I'm subjected to the social calendar of 30 families that are all on vacation, right?
Yep.
So I, I get, I think that's, I think that's reason, I think that's good information. I didn't really look at it that way. And that's, I, I, so I think that's why you have to just say you can't. So my point, back to my original question, which is, I would imagine that the owner is still allowed to have parties.
Right, right.
This just says, I mean, once you're an STR property.
You can't have parties.
Yeah.
No holiday gatherings.
No more fun if you.
No more.
It's all business, yep.
Yeah.
No more fun. Okay, check-ins are not allowed between the hours of 9:00 PM and 8:00 AM. How can this be enforced? You know, that's a good question, Maddie, but you know what? If you have a neighbor like me, I'm on it. Don't you worry about it.
Somebody will enforce it.
It's like.
I mean, I'll be enforcing it on my neighbor, but.
There's a lot of unenforceable.
Yeah, there is. Um. Existing noise and lighting hours. I think that that's reasonable. I think that's a good, that's a good call to make it, because I, I do believe that the more aligned with our existing code, that the more, you know, the more defensible this is. Right? It's not, there's no special, there's no special attention being given or discrimination against people who are as, you know, having STRs, right? It's like, it, it applies equally. This, this is an unequal application of noise and lighting restrictions, right? Ordinances. Okay, scrolling, scrolling.
Using when you're doing that too, gets more confusing.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, you have these subsets for which special conditions apply, right? Okay. Okay, down here. Okay, so this is the enforcement police department, right? So are they going to deputize a merry band of volunteer residents to enforce this?
No, they said the police department.
I'm kidding, yeah.
I, I, my question is just, you know, if they have the capacity, I would imagine that they.
Well, right, and a lot of these things are not really, they're not behavioral things that the police would enforce otherwise, right?
Yeah, I mean, I think of things like the check-ins, like the lights, the noise, the, you know.
Well, they would enforce those things or they would respond to complaints about those things anyway. But is responding to a complaint the same as enforcing?
Hmm.
I mean, I know there can be enforcement involved in responding to a complaint, but are they the same thing? I'm actually asking, not just.
Yeah, I don't know. Yeah. I do wonder about, yeah, I wonder about the enforcement of, of.
Like, you think about that criteria, like, hey, the phone, the name and the phone number has to be prominently displayed, like, okay, is that being enforced by the police officer? Right? That kind of thing, like that, how is that so? How is it? And so would there be?
Might be, I think that might be part of their original inspection, actually.
Yeah, so I, right.
More about inspection. It's, it would be the building inspector?
Yeah, code enforcement, right?
So enforcement, it seems like there, there are gonna be two tiers of enforcement items, right? That, that we, they need to be, they need to be called through and distinguished between these items here in category A. These are, these are enforced by the police department because they're public safety, public security. You know, they're consistent with the police department's duties.
Duties, exactly.
And then these over here in section B, these are enforced by the code enforcement officer, right?
I think that's really clear and smart, yeah.
Okay, I'm gonna add a little sniggle here.
And then maybe, I, I'm not gonna be able to make it much longer. As far as going to a narrative at this. We, do we wanna, we could pick it up again? I, but we've got to get them something pretty soon, because it's been really.
I think what we can, we can do is at the end or somewhere else to say, this is, you know, all the comments here are discussed by the members and so on. This is so far what we come with. And then as it goes along, there might be other things, you know, we, we can say it, otherwise we'll be sitting here forever. If we do it next time, we still go through knowing us, so.
Is there a way to draft the narrative beforehand and sort of circulate it and we can sort of just edit or should we try that? Are we allowed to?
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah.
But you, Matt, when do we need to submit this thing to them?
What was it, February 22nd? February 20th, I think it was.
A month ago.
I mean, I, that's why I submitted the memo that, you know, that I wrote a while. I don't remember when that even was at this point.
Two weeks ago?
No, 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 that memo, no. But we need to get it to him as soon as possible. They were, they're meeting tonight, but obviously I said we're not gonna make it. So, I mean, and again, we don't, it doesn't have to be on a regular schedule. We can just set up a, a quick call or.
Okay.
Anytime, if you, if you feel it's necessary, you know, just.
Is it, does this?
We're almost to the end, right?
Yeah, we are. This, this statement about enforcement, does this reflect, does this reflect what we, what we collectively agree to be a reasonable require, you know, request of them, that requirements and restrictions under the chapter should be identified as enforced by either the code enforcement officer or the police department?
Yeah.
There, now we have, we have more capacity, Maddie.
Yeah, exactly.
Um, okay, we've gone through the, the, the STR allocation chart and we've sort of hashed this out. Do people have more contributions to make to this discussion?
Only that parrot has two Ts.
Oh, okay. Where is?
I, I, no, I wrote that already.
Oh, good for you. Okay, good, good, excellent.
Keep it light.
Okay, all right. All right, and so, so we need a, we need a narrative. Is that, is that the?
Well, I think just, I, I think just to attach with this, basically just that. And I think, you know, I'm a little fried. It was, I had a very early meeting. Just that we, you know, that the, based on the use statement, that, you know, we, that we want to make sure that there, you know, there's a straight line from the, you know, from every solution to every problem. You know, so when we're asked to explain this, because it's all gonna be new and whether or not we're explaining it at Village Hall or in, you know, or in Supreme Court or whatever, that it's, that it's, that we can, that it's, that it's clear. Secondly, you know, and I think that should just kind of be the driving, you know, should be, you know, kind of your guiding principle behind everything. And then, secondly, that that, you know, we should consider some sort of a, you know, sunset.
Sorry.
Sunsetting or phasing in, you know, just to, my concern would be the, you know, would be you know, you have these 38 people that have this, and if you pass the local law and then the next day or whatever, they're, they're prop, they can't do what they've been doing for many years, right? My concern is that they're, they're likely to just get an attorney to see if they can get a different outcome or get an extension or whatever. And then the village is just going to be paying lawyers to respond to those claims, right? So I think that if you were, you know, I, I would almost be open to like a one-year, two-year kind of sunsetting of the existing. That if the goals are to make sure they're legal and to regulate it, right, to have hours and to have, you know, and, you know, you're, you're, you're dealing with the party thing, you know, we have one here that actually has parties quite a bit, I understand. Then you're doing that, you do that immediately, but then those people then are subjected to the lottery within like one to two years and then the whole thing starts. Right? That you, that you issue, you'd consider, if, if there are 38, I don't know that there are, I suspect there are far more than 38. But if you just say they're all, you know, if they, if they apply, right, and pay the fee and if they pass inspection and bring their place up to the requirements of a, you know, of a host, you know, does it make sense to soften the blow, which would then soften the, the, you know, the blowback? Right? To just kind of sunset those out, the existing ones after one to two years. And during that one to two years, obviously you might lose some just by attrition, right? And so maybe you start doing an annual lottery, you know, to, to fill, right? So say you lose five or six in the first six months or whatever, or, you know, because it's, it's likely that people will see the writing on the wall and will just exit, right? You know, so you may have a bunch of slots open up, you know, in six months or whatever, and then you could hold a lottery. Anyway, just.
Yeah, and that's another reason why you might want to change the number, because you might, for the first phase, if you are gonna do a sunsetting thing like this, you would probably allow less additional ones in the lottery or something. I don't know, maybe not. And maybe then increase them later. I don't know.
Yeah, or, yeah, yeah, but again, I think to, and to Lara's earlier point, is there a way to, when you paper this, when you do it in the code, is there a way to set fees and the actual number? The number's probably hard to set aside though, because I think it has to be that you're saying there's this number that is less debt, you know, deleterious to to, you know, to the, to the village character and, and people's quiet enjoyment, right? So then how, how are you then saying, yeah, and we just bumped that up, right?
Yeah.
And then you gotta say, what, it's, we found it's not, or we don't think that it is, or it's all seen, it all starts to get really subjective.
No, yeah.
You know, I think, I think probably the safest thing to do, well, the safest thing to do is just, just, you don't approve it at all, right? You basically say, we don't think it's compatible. You know, we're outlawing short-term rentals, but that's not what anybody wants to do. You know, so then, you know, then you start to go into the, you know, to the gray areas and have to start talking about, why did you, why did you make the decisions that you made? But I think if you take it as a percentage of, you know, of ratable properties, right, of these residential ratable properties, that, you know, you could just kind of say, we just, we chose a number, right? It's 5%, it's 3%, you know? You know, if every, look, if like one in 10 houses became, you know, you know, a short-term rental, that's a lot, you know? So is it 2%, 3%? So that, you know, you just, you, you picked a number, right? That you thought was at least to keep it down. So I think that that's kind of what they're doing, which I think, I, seems defensible to me, it's certainly. You know, and again, this stuff is all gonna get tested by the courts eventually. So anyway, just kind of a narrative like that, and we can touch base on it. If people want to go, what's that?
Yeah, so team, I have, while you were talking, I was taking notes here. So I've got narrative notes here. So these are the four points that I, I.
Let's do, but I bet yours are better than mine.
Thanks. Yeah, sounds good. So based on the use statement, we want to be sure that, we want to ensure there's a straight line from every solution outlined in the law, just for the problem needing mitigation, right?
I, I added such that it's clear and defensible.
Oh, yeah, here I, but we're concerned the law could be enforceable based on seemingly arbitrary nature of many of the criteria.
Okay.
But let's, I think defensible is good.
I like the term that, yeah, I, I saw that in a lot of Matt's comments and I, I like it because I think that brings up clearly what we're worried about.
Yeah, defensible. Defensible.
Yeah, even. Yeah, even, and even at, even at Village Hall, right? You just don't want, you know, angry villagers basically saying, you know, so you base, you do, you have to explain to them why you did what you did, right? You know, because obviously, there are no perfect solutions to any of this stuff. And you go back to the use statement that says, you know, we're, we're trying to just, you know, keep these from, you know, from having a negative impact on the residential use, right? And the character of the village and changing people's kind of quiet enjoyment of a residential neighborhood. So I think that a percentage of the, you know, the, you know, the residential properties, you know, I think is, as good as anything to say that's, you know, that it's defensible, you know?
Okay. So. Next step, do, do we, do we want to, um, think on this and meet in two weeks and conclude our, our narrative?
We should submit this thing to them, while if we have other comments, we can always add on instead of not giving them anything.
What about if we circulate, uh, the, these notes? Did, did you write more notes, Stephanie? Matt said, I, I.
Only, only in this, only what you see in narrative notes here.
Oh, okay, I, oh, where's narrative note, sorry.
Oh, sorry. Can you see, I'm, I'm in the, I'm still sharing.
Yeah.
Oh, oh, yeah, so I should be able to see it in the, yeah, and, got it.
Or we could do, we could just, why don't we, we could pick it up in a week? Right, and then just, and then if people could kind of tighten it up, take another, you know, take a, you know, take a step away from it, take a look back at it, because this is, it's, it's a, it's a very important, it's an important law, you know, and obviously, the planning board, you know, is the one that kind of talks about, you know, use. So, and it's, you know, it really all hinges around the compatibility of the uses. Like I said, like Stephanie's point, that a party isn't just a party when it's, when the house is shared by thirty different families, right? You know, a party is a party times thirty, right? If, you know, it's, you know, it's a different family every weekend and you can rent for thirty weekends, that could be, you know, you're subjecting, you know, somebody to the, you know, the social calendar.
Yeah.
Of, you know, and people that are. In party mode, right? Because, or potentially, right? Maybe they're coming here for an event or whatever, but, or they're probably just here to, to, you know, to, to socialize, so. It's different, so I think that it's important to kind of take a, you know, take time with it, we just need to get it back to them. But I think if we take just a few more days, that, you know, I mean, it's certainly worth that, you know, given how much they've waited so far, to just kind of say, this is kind of how we feel about it. Because I think the narrative is important, the comments are great, but they're really just comments, but I think the narrative, the kind of taking a step back and saying, you know, this, this straight line from problem to solution, right? Always to, that should be your guiding principle and that, I, I really think it's important to consider some sort of a phased-in approach and, and to prioritize this stuff. If the priority is getting it down to thirty-eight, that's one thing. If the priority is leaving it at the existing number, but, you know, the highest priority, I would think, is to make them legal and conforming and get them inspected and permitted and, um, and get it started, right? Is it, you know, I, I think we're, I, I think the narrative, probably we should add something to the narrative as well, that we're not, we're not loving the allocation table at all. That's another priority, that we think that it's just going to be problematic with respect to, you know, to explaining the, you know, the logic of the allocation table. And we just think that, you know, that if, if something like that has to be done, then it, then probably a physical distance is probably better, you know, feet. I think Rhine Bex was like two hundred and fifty feet or something like that.
Yeah.
I don't remember what it was, but it, you know, or eight lots or something like that, I forget whose was whose, but, um, but that might be. It, it might be a better kind of, uh, you know, more non-arbitrary, because it really just kind of get into, well, this street gets zero, this street gets one. And then again, as I said, you know, like we said, we're, then you, then you go down the path of, wait a minute, I, I bought the same property in the same, in the same district. And I don't have the same access to.
Exactly.
You know, the street next to me, right? I think that's just hard to explain.
Yes.
Um, and I wouldn't wanna have, I wouldn't wanna be asked to do it. So if you can just say that, you know, because again, and even this, even when you say distance, and like I said, you, I can challenge that, because I can say, well, why not just put them next to each other on the corner and leave them, you know? You know, as opposed to, you know, if they're three lots apart, or you say fifty feet and you have a, or, you know, and you have a very wide lot and you end up with one on either side of you, is that better, right?
That's a good point.
You know, so I mean, I just, I think these things are, they're trying to solve to things that are, that are difficult, they're very difficult, right? So, so let's just take a step away from it, we, we could do another, we could do a special meeting next week, you just drop on a.
Okay.
Does that work?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, that works, that works for me. I'm gonna stop sharing, team.
All right, very good.
There you are.
All right, um, I think that's it, we have no public, so we have no public comment. Doing a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All right.
Second.
On favorite, all right, I, very good, all right, thanks so much, thanks a lot, everybody, good night.
Good night, Jeff. Good night, Maddie.
Good night, thanks, good night. Good night.